Actually, we can't. This is a special meeting. So it's posted as a special meeting, so we can't change the agenda.
Well, it's upstairs.
There, the proposal is a special.
Okay.
They can't change this question. That's what I saw.
Yeah.
I never, no, I never vote because it's special. The last one.
All this meeting. Yeah, work session, the city council, June 17th, 2024, 6:00 PM on Monday, June 17th. All the words, please call all.
Mayor Pion.
President.
Councilmember Rainbow.
President.
Councilmember Alders.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Flattable.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Johnson.
Here.
New City Administrator Scott Andrews, President, will call us taking soon.
Okay, any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Is that random?
Because we have somebody in the items that wants to speak, and I'm going to pick four items. They would have four items then. And it would be after the agenda.
Councilmember Brian.
If there are no other changes, I would make a motion to approve the agenda amendment.
A second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilman Brian after the amendment to add floor items. Second by Councilman Flattable, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, motion carries. Mr. Williams, you're up.
What was open white paper?
Right here at the end of the table. As soon as you get close to the law.
I can bring up the table if you want.
Oh, you can slide it all big?
No.
No, no, no. Oh, my name is Dan Williams. Seventy-nine, sixty-seven, hundred ninety-first, Lane Northwood, now in the north side. By five, we're on three. And I just had a question. I always hope after the smoke clears after this meeting that it's more evident. The structure here, well, as far as who the boss is here in the city, it's the administrator, the mayor, or the collective, or the council. Talked to a lot of people, and they don't know who's running it, who the boss is. And a lot of people think there should be a boss. Before, we had an administrator, pretty much the mayor was assumed to be the boss. Now we have administrator, some people think, well, he's the boss. Some people think he's the mayor's right-hand man. Then some people say, well, this guy's making almost six figures. And I don't know what you make, you're stipend in six, seven hundred bucks a month. And so it makes no sense to have a guy making that salary, and he's not the boss. And so I was, I was hoping that you guys could direct me to see the paper that would outline the rock responsibilities of the administrator, the mayor, the counselor, how they interrelate. So we know who's running the city and who is not. Thank you.
Welcome. It's called state statute for a statutory A city. And you can find the state statute online, you can find it in Minnesota, League of Minnesota Cities handbook, defining a lot of the responsibilities. So there are, are those delineated responsibilities. And well, I'm sure we'll be talking about some little connections. Thank you for that. All right, and move on to the amended claims. And since we haven't approved any of them, I've got a couple of questions on the two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand as well. Quick question on. Page two. There's a four-hundred-and-forty-dollar worth of salt. And it looks like it's evenly distributed between general government supplies, fire supplies, and public works. You know, we just, we just bought five hundred and forty of them, distributing to all the places that have softeners.
We bought a pound, we get a discount of the salt, and then we distributed it to all three locations.
That's what I assumed. And then on the Center Point Energy, the utilities, are we doing that on a monthly budget? So we're, we're, we use two-hundred-and-ninety dollars at the fire station for gas. This, this building is a hundred and sixty-six. And city and office shop, four-hundred-and-fifty, and a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty in recycling. For May? Seems like an awful lot of gas. I, I just assume we're budgeting.
Is the bill, is the bill dated May on it? Or is the usage for May?
It gets to May twenty-four bills.
So then it probably would have been April consumption. Typically, all the gas bills and bills on that account. Doesn't take away your question, I'm just saying that this.
Yeah, so it's dollars and dollars. So we're assuming that's April.
I'm just telling you how the bills typically come through, and when utility bill comes through for the gas, it's usually the prior month, and you pay it the month of May, being May in June someone's.
Okay, and then the rolling ladder, is that another one for recycling?
Yes, so that rolling ladder is in addition to the one that we have for purchase carries. I'm looking to get that paid through as soon as possible.
Okay, and then the truck will pay the bill without the tax. The tax will be next month, is what I understand.
Unless we want to do that, we pay the tax. I won't use up the tax.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor. I would say we're holding it since the initial check, let's wind that out and write it on check.
I'll need to know what that is. Just prove it. To, to approve it tonight?
Yes. I don't.
So we don't have a number for tonight?
I guess only one.
Well, it's the dollar plus tax. It's right on eleven.
We know it's probably eleven thousand dollars, but we came into this thing, we were going to prove the truck, and then we were going to pay the tax next month this time. Yeah.
If we don't have the exact number, then we can just give it next month. In March.
But we do have the number for the truck, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. We didn't get all the tax fees.
Councilman Flattable.
If we, if we don't pay the check, this month we'll need fees on that. I have to talk from that. I have not. I haven't even talked from, I didn't have time today to let them know that we have to pay the tax on it, so to give them any voice.
So right now, the truck is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one fifty-eight for the chassis. And then there'll be another approximately double that, more than that for the attachments.
Now, as I understand it, the attachments, we don't have to.
Do we know why?
Because of the plow.
Yeah, but that's what Lori thought, this was a plow. And that's why she thought it did have tax.
Well, and we didn't pay for tax on any of the attachments for the rental.
Yeah, but Lori ended the same understanding, you think, that because it said plow equipment, we don't pay tax.
It's just because we're buying something and we are taxed with that.
Okay. So do I pay the hundred and fifty-seven, one fifty-eight, oh, one? And then figure out what the tax is, and then we send the tax to the state, or we send the tax to NUS?
To NUS.
To NUS? Okay. All right, counsel, what do you like to do?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's what we have to do now, because I know the tax rate's not the regular tax rate, and it changes on vehicles, and we, we don't know the exact amount. If it can't wait till July, it should be an openly easy thing to take care of between now and then.
Okay.
So by the front, I'll pay the tax, shall we proceed?
Okay. Make your motion.
I'll make that a motion to pay the claims as presented.
I'll sign it. All right, we have a motion to page plans as presented by Councilman Brian, second by Councilmember Alders. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. All right. Now we've got item three, clarifying the authority of city administration, day-to-day operations of the city, and disconnect in staffing council under three items. So are those four things, or are those the three items? Well, I don't have anything on that first general statement. I do have three RCA's there. They're clarifying documents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Councilmember Flattable, I have submitted the three RCA's with resolution. I don't want anything above this to be sent back. Unless they ever take that in as part of what we do.
So I, I'm going to go back to the meetings from, from last month, any minutes. And there was a little misunderstanding, I guess I didn't catch it when I was beginning the meetings. But there was a proposal. Because we, we'd had questions on, said the expenditure and the fiduciary responsibility is the duty of the city council, now that it's essentially a city. It says here, I offered to sit down with the League of Minnesota Cities, and I, I was not offering. I don't know if those are the words I used, but that certainly was not my intention to sit down with the League of Minnesota Cities. It was to ask them in to help us as a council understand the clarity of what was asked here tonight. What is the role in a statutory A city? We are not a manager, lead city, we are, there are certain fiduciary responsibilities that the council and council alone has, and there are certain day-to-day activities that we have delegated to staff. And so my recommendation was to invite the league in. And Councilmember Rainbow graciously said that she would, would take care of it. She and Councilman Flattable would bring this forward, since they brought it home, they would reach out to the league. I still recommend that we have the league come in and have somebody independent of our emotional opinions come in and say, this is the way it operates in eight-hundred-and-other-fifty cities, statutory cities operate this way. And since they have the research team, they have the mediation team, they have the lawyers, and then obviously they would ask our, based on everything else that they've asked of the league, they would invite an opinion from our lawyer. But I would go back to the, the sentence on number three to say, if we want to clarify that, I think the best source of that is actually having the league come in and give specific statutory information. And then we can ask questions of somebody independent of our opinion. And so I would, I would make that motion to, to clarify. Oh, I wasn't looking to sit down with the league. I was asking if the league could be invited in to sit down with us as a council and staff to clarify these things. Councilman Flattable.
So I didn't, I did make a phone call to the league to talk to someone, but I didn't, just to get information. Because of course, nothing goes forward without council approval, but I did call to see what they can provide us just to get some information. I spoke with, that we, Amber, sorry, correct your name, don't.
Amber Eisen Schenk is one of the neighbors that I provided, because she's having research.
Okay.
The lawyer, and she's actually worked with the city before.
Okay, so yeah, so she, and I just spoke with her actually today, because I just wanted per Seth's email, I decided to just go ahead. Again, I did not do anything that council would not approve, because it was just information, and just asked her if, what they would provide. And they said that they do training, mediation, which you won't, you know all this, I didn't. So I'm, and I wasn't sure if our new staff knew. They do mediation, they do building relationships, and they do, they give us. But mediation services, if we needed anything further that if we did, I don't think we do, would not be free, but everything else would. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be charging taxpayers or anything. Of course, the league also meets council approval, which I told them that, too, that I was just calling for information. What they would look at is they have a research team, and we, we could reach out to them for municipal operations, how things are done, just like you said. Also, they said they have learning content, and they have a consulting for goal setting. They talk about roles and responsibilities, and they have an online training for city and then council that talks directly about roles and responsibilities of statutory cities. They have, and then what they said that they could do is, before we even, what we thought would go forward and what we needed, they had a woman called Amy Garley, who is the lead processor. She, she's a collaboration service manager. And she said that she would, she would be willing to go over what, what the process was if we decided what then the process would be. I didn't talk with Amy, they said if council does that, and Amber just said, then you will talk to Amy, and Amy would lead and talk to what you got, what we should do as a council and as a staff going forward. And she would help us through that process. They said that probably the training video, they'd want us to all watch together. And she said that they probably want us to take a survey of what we need to work on. And where council and staff see issues, problems, good, bad, to help us understanding each of our walls. And then going from there, she would take that information, and she would recommend things that we do with, with the league from there.
This is Amy or Amber?
Amy, Amber told me everything that I just told you, but she said, and I didn't talk to Amy, but once, that, that would be the process of what we would do, is if we made the decision, we would then talk to Amy.
Yeah, so, so Amber's the lawyer, and she heads up the research department, wants, when you call, and getting her team to ask questions. Amy is, is, is taking the place of Pam Whitmore, who worked with the city previously. And that's kind of where got us going a number of years ago, because her title has mediation in it. And when she was first proposed, we were thinking education, and then all of a sudden, we felt we were in mediation. So we, we got a little confused to begin with, when Pam came out here. I do think she had some good ideas, I've never worked with Amy on that. I just know she took Pam's place.
I can say that what Amber told me was that Amy was different than, than the other lady.
Amy, Amy works for the insurance trust fund. Amber works for the League of Minnesota Cities. Okay, now, League of Minnesota Cities is in collaboration with the insurance trust fund. It's League of Minnesota's insurance trust fund, but it's a separate entity. And their, their big thing is to try and make sure the city costs anything that they would insure in the city's part, so it doesn't have to extend. Whereas league is more, here's how the statutory things are. Amy's more, let's, let's keep you out of court.
Well, I'm just telling you.
Insurance trust funds never, never likes anybody getting sued.
Well, that's just what Amber said. Amber said, do what she would suggest, because I said, what would you suggest that maybe happens before? And she said, give council approval first, and then after that, she said, then this is probably what would happen.
Yeah, I, I would like to recommend that we, certainly if they recommend the survey, but then have them actually show up. Because the, the problem with online is you really can't ask questions. And I, you know, it's kind of a vital thing, we will, to say, okay, I understand that, but I need interpretation. And that's why they can use some of that in person. Councilmember Rainbow.
I, I applaud Councilmember Flattable for making the call. I think we've gotten off course here. The initial request based on an RCA that was put in was about budgeting. And that we just voted the, have them come out and talk to us about the, how budgeting is working, what we can improve, what council can improve. Let's stick with that. If we want to go farther, let's have a conversation at another meeting. That piece is not on the agenda. We will have to contact the league, then talk to them about how they can come out and assist us in determining when a check is to be cut, or bill is to be paid, what that process should be based on statute, rules and regulations, whatever. I think we've gotten off track. Oh, that's my fault. I don't want this to be the last.
Okay, my, my opinion would be, as long as we have the league come out here, and if that's the initiator saying, we, we want to ask specific questions about expenditures, preapproval versus budgeted versus council approval, would we want to open it up any more than that? Or make it two different entities?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
That would be something the council should put on, and we may have to. Just, hopefully, feels, I think it's important that we get the one pass done. Have done, we have an issue of, you know, of, of process, of budgeting payments, process of the payment. Let's get that under a bell first, and then we feel that you can counsel, as a whole feels to me, to go farther, then we can go farther.
So I guess to Councilman Flattable's point, she's reading an email saying there's bigger concerns than just who can authorize checks when. And it really has to do with, to, obviously, somebody in the city knows, because we have questions here, saying, go on to the city. Thank you, big question. We're statutory, we're statutory A city, and that's, that's something everybody needs, we need to know our role, staff needs to know their role. We're not a, a home role charter city, like some cities around us, and so we have a different structure. And it would, would seem to make sense if we're asking a question on something as specific as who authorizes checks when. It really has to be a picture of who's authorized to do what and when, not just checks.
Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree, but it would be interesting to know what the rest of the council feels. Do we want to go piecemeal, bill-dotted, or do it all at once?
All right, so I'll, I'll put it as a council's motion. I would recommend, I made motion to invite representatives from the league and those that they would recommend as far as support staff to a joint meeting with the council and staff to identify statutorily the roles and responsibilities of the council and the appointed staff in a statutory A city. That would include the financial elements we're talking about, and then the other questions as to what authority the council has directed, and which, which we can direct, because there are certain things we can't direct to others. So that would be my motion.
Well, second for discussion.
All right, I have a motion from Mayor, second, Councilman Ryan, other discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ryan.
It appears, I mean, we've always been, been going up, I mean, we're a city for a city, no expenditure box, that's what it is. Which basically goes into the council is in charge and of the city. And that if, if need be, certain things can be delegated to, yeah. Obviously, we're, we're using the administrator position to, to handle the day-to-day operations. So if there's questions or concerns above and beyond that, I just don't know why, what those specific issues are and why we would need to go. Are there specific tasks other than the, the bill paying part? Specific question, other than the bill paying part, that, that?
I, I think, I think based on the email I went out this week, yes. Is, is the council, does they have, do they have the authority to direct what staff will do and want to? And that's, that's part of what I read in the email here, is, this is what, what I was thinking. To put in my words. I know, you know, here's what I think I should be able to do as, as a council member, who, who we can contact, who we can't contact. Do we take direction from staff? Does staff take direction from the council as a whole? Does staff take direction from individual or group members of the council that aren't majority? And I think there's some, some lack of clarity there that needs to be identified. And just so the questions can all be brought out, saying, here's an example. And the council can say, here's our thinking on it, staff can say, here's our thinking on it. But what happens is it breaks down into an emotional discussion without the basis of, here's the statutory. Here's what you're, I mean, you look at the Minnesota handbook. And I don't want to get down that trail, but if you look in the, the league handbook, there's various specific things. Here's what has to happen on staff's part. We have to have a clerk, we have to have a treasurer, we have to, we don't have to have an administrator. But if you do, you can delegate certain things that, that the council doesn't have time for. When we say the council doesn't have time for, what does that mean? You know, if we have time for it, we don't delegate it, then how do we determine that's something the council can do? But that's what the statute says, you can delegate to administrative staff, but you have to have these responsibilities. Somebody has to do the following. And typically, the clerk and treasurer are the person who runs the, the office day-to-day. And I think, you know, we can go through the handbook and debate it, or we can have somebody that says, yeah, this is the way it's being done over the state. It's meeting the statutory requirements and, and clarify it without having just the opinions. It was, then it's the real motion. And since they do this for eight-hundred-and-fifty cities, they're pretty well-versed. And they do it from tiny cities and a couple hundred people to hundreds of thousands of peoples.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I hope, what you just said a few minutes ago, you weren't referring to coming out of my emails, because I don't believe in emails. So the emails I was sending out was clarification on, first of all, I don't have the, this goals and initiatives ranked from any body on the council, from the council.
Okay, I, I don't want to go too far down this, this path. We have a motion on the floor.
Oh.
For the council.
Well, I would like to be able to speak to that from on.
Hey, and, and I would, as I sent an email to you too, I would like to see what goals you already have. What, what are the things that the city's already working on? Because it, it's, it's strange to me to have staff tell the council, you need to do this by, by this time. Directing staff to, or the council to do things, and I haven't seen what, what's on your activities list that says, here's the things we're working on, and bring it to the council, saying, here's, here's what I think is important, is the council agreeing to keep going down that road. So that's it. But that's a, a different situation. We have a, an opportunity to help clarify that. Because, you know, and certainly, I have no idea how the league's going to do it. The league generally, well, they have a lot of experience in this, and it won't necessarily be what I want to hear. But I think it's important to say, based on laws, which the lawyers at the league are, are burst in, and based on their experience with other cities of our size, and larger and smaller, here's a recommendation, here's what you have to do, here's some things that will help you communicate more effectively. And I just think that, that they're well-suited to do that. If we invited them to do so, like, as Councilman Flattable said, that's something the council would have to agree to, because they're not going to invite themselves in, ever impose their opinions without a request. I think that would then clarify if, if there are other things, we can give those all on the table at the same time. We know there's some regarding, you know, the, the financial process that we're going through. Other discussion?
Sir.
Councilman Flattable. Councilmember Flattible.
I know you don't want to go down another rabbit hole, but if we're talking about Scott's email, I don't know if he can clarify something.
Well, the email's not part of our back at all, so. And since we don't all have time here, that's, that'd be hard to do.
Well, the email was the doubt here, everyone, and it's part of number three.
Number six. It's not in the bag.
But you all received it in your email.
And I didn't memorize it, so.
Well, you just quoted it.
I did. We have a motion and a second. Do we invite the, the league in? But I'll clarify roles and responsibilities.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Ross? Yeah, I mean, I guess from my perspective, you could, you're unbiased, but already in here, interview the staff, interview the team, understand if there's what, what items need to be clarified, how we want to work together so we don't get, so we don't have drugs to this, that. It's a pretty small team, so. We need to, we need the league here with the same, carrying the same book. I feel like we're drifting a little bit. So if they can come in and help us, I think that would be great.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
So are you suggesting a separate workshop or doing it during the conference?
Separate workshop. The other council questions? Although it's been fairly emotional, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So then I guess the, the next motion would be who invites a man and coordinates?
I'm willing to continue to reject. It's not something I've done in the past, but I'd maybe give direction more from council.
Can I recommend that, that maybe since we're the personnel committee, that the two of us do that? Okay, so I would make a motion that, that Councilmember Flattible and the mayor and the personnel committee would reach out and coordinate with the league of Minnesota cities and staff to set up a workshop.
That's something.
Have a motion and a second. Councilmember Rainville? Any other discussion? Standing here, none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So now we go on to annual appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Flattible, this is your, you're the first name on this one, so.
So, Mayor, I'd like to ask the council that they also allow Councilmember Ray to assist me because this is, I haven't presented our meeting yet, so. During the year that council directs changes, factors which can affect the annual appointments made in January of the current year. Reflected below are additions, changes, and deletions due to current resolution for review by the council. If not noted below, the remaining appointments, et cetera, are not affected. As part of this revision, we are suggesting that we reestablish the park liaison who would work with the city staff regarding park issues.
Can I, can I ask on that? Because when we, we changed the park committee, we went to the recommendation of ad hoc. What, what would you perceive, not that I'm against having a liaison to park activities, but that the idea was more if there's, we had hot committees say pickleball. And we had people that were interested and knowledgeable in pickleball, we would put together a committee just to figure out pickleball. That there would be a liaison from the council to that group of people to communicate. Because otherwise, I'm not sure the liaison to the staff, what they're, what they're communicating. Because if the staff is looking for doing something in the parks, that's a request from the staff. But if the residents are saying, I really would like pickleball or whatever the next important recreational activity is, they want to do something or a specific park improvement, and we had to get the residents to do that. That to me makes sense to say a liaison would interact between that, those ad hoc committees and the council, and, and they would be the communicator to the staff. But it's, it's a little different having staff communicate again to the council through a liaison. Because it seems backwards to me. If they have, they have a question for parks for improvement, we wouldn't need a liaison for that.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, when, years back when we determined that we were going to eliminate park and record loading bridge committees, we did have discussion on ad hoc committees. Council never made a final decision on that. I have the documentation, I believe I still have the documentation that I put together to work with, with the city clerk at the time. I believe before we bring that into it, that needs to be looked at. So I would prefer that we stay with the current verbiage here and then look at the ad hoc.
So what would the role of a park liaison be then?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
A perfect example was the issue of the, the grills and the hot ashtrays. They haven't, this is something that staff is looking at, have a conversation with that liaison. What do they think is, is, is that a good proposal? Is it not, not necessary? That then would come to council. It would be to just assist with, at this point, assist with staff in trying to help with some of the day-to-day things to try to limit or to lighten the workload of this. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Flattible.
Also, to your example, the pickleball court. So that was something that I worked on, just I volunteered to do it, but it would be the same kind of thing where I called all the different cities about the pickleball courts and things and gave, I gave, well, last week I got the final information, but gave information to to staff and then also so he could, so our administrator could put it in his review also, or write a report to council too on what I had found out as well. So it was more, just like Councilmember Rainville said, it's kind of, it's just, there's, when there's extra things or things that are related that sometimes council can do with, just like you do with every other thing, a lot of council. So, yeah, that there's just one extra person that they're going to, to lighten the load and also give more information up.
And then, and I don't, you know, obviously you want to do the pickleball. That didn't have to be a liaison role.
No.
And I go back to one of the things we used to say with committees is, what we wanted to avoid was the committees getting involved on a day-to-day. And so, well, I understand whatever we can do to lighten the load. That's, that's why we ended up volunteering as councils. I, I just, to me, the and, and again, I'll leave it at that. The liaison role is between an entity and the council. Not just additional help. I, I don't know that liaison is the right title for helping out in the office. I mean, if it's park-related and you want volunteer for it, that's great. But if they're the committee, it would get back to actually proposing ad hoc committees. That, that makes sense to have a liaison there, but if you're just volunteering help out in the office, I don't know that that's a liaison role. And then if that's the case, when we get down to these, what we're paying for, is that a who determines what, what's paid for? Is I'm, I'm volunteering for the city to do some things for staff as a council member, as a liaison? And then it starts getting into, okay, we send you to the watershed, represent the safety of the watershed and bring information back to the council. And for that, we compensate you. So that just, you know, is this a if it's, if it's voluntary help out in the office, is it a compensated liaison position?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
If you're concerned about it, I'm willing to strike that from the request for council action, and you can put that on your to-do list to determine how you want that done.
Which, which in particular?
The park liaison. If you don't, are not comfortable with what is here and want to see change, I don't have that change to look at. So we can have a meeting that can hopefully move smoothly. If Councilmember Flattible is willing to look at that, remove that park liaison and just look at the items on that. Annual appointments.
Okay.
And as part of that, if we're going to have rules and regulations, responsibilities for that, we should have that for everything. You want to take that test on again?
All right, so as we go down there, obviously cleaned up some things. We have new building fish and new planner. The acting emergency management director, we have right now the mayor appoints that. And we have St. Francis fire chief as our acting emergency manager. And while I recognize Administrator Laner has quite a background in, in emergency management on his previous job and his volunteer work in El River. Our emergency operation plan has a, a completely different set of roles for administrator, because there are specific duties the administrator has on the matrix. And they differ significantly from the managing director, the manage, the emergency operations manager. So and, and I don't think that I should necessarily be the backup. You know, I was doing it because we didn't have anybody going to any of the meetings or working with the emergency management team on the county. But when it comes down to an actual EOP, emergency operation plan, the mayor has certain responsibilities on the matrix, the council has certain responsibilities, the administrator has them, the public works has them. And the, the manager themselves has a different set of oversight. So I think that we should have, continue to have Chief Smith there, and then I would recommend when we get our new chief in here, that they select somebody from the fire department as their backup. Because they will have, all of us will have a different role should there actually be an emergency in town. And so I would say, keep it as, as Chief Smith and maybe backup is to be determined once we get a new chief. That makes sense? Because I'd say Administrator Laner will have other duties specifically on the EOP. That makes sense?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Flattible.
So when you're saying these lists of what certain duties are, where are these lists that?
It's, it's in the emergency operations plan, which we have a draft of right now. The county just got the new county plan in. And so they have offered a fellow who helped us with our first emergency operation plan many years ago is now an employer in the county, and they're willing to have that person help us rewrite our emergency operation plan. We have a draft in place right now, the council has never approved. That was done back when we started the fire department. And the county is willing to help us upgrade that to the current status based on what they just did as a county. So they would draft that and, and then that would go to Scott. And he would put finishing testing on it, make sure all the names were in place, and then we would have training on it. So everybody knows their role should an emergency attend town.
Is there a timing for all of that, so?
For?
You said for the emergency operation plan, so there one that's in existence. You said that county had just gotten finished there, so are we, do we have to update ours as well? And is there a plan going forward?
Yes, we, we have a draft. I have a copy from back when I was working with Dan and our consultants four years ago. And then Scott has a copy of that. And the, the question is each of those, there's a matrix that goes with that. So there's fifteen ESPs, I think they're called. And each of those fifteen ESPs has a primary responsibility and a secondary responsibility. So that matrix defines who's supposed to do what. And within that, it tells you we have to make sure that we have titles and names associated with that. And that what was presented as a draft four years ago, it's consistent with what the state and county just required of emergency management. And that's, that's one of the things we were looking for in the job posting is that the person has a certain amount of training in emergency operations and has certain certification. So they can pick this up and run with it.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor? So my understanding, just I understand that, thank you for the information, that with the annual appointment of this liaison due in the, in our past practice of appointing someone through the year, what you were stating is that we wait for a fire chief and we go forward with that, and we don't have someone in that position at this point.
No, Chief Schmidt will stay in that. She's actually getting a lot of the mayor's responsibility to appoint that emergency manager.
Okay.
And I'm saying is, if you don't want me as the backup, I'm okay with that. But I say we just leave it open until the new chief comes in, and if that's the case. I don't, you know, I, I can, I can still interact with the emergency management on an artificial basis.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, I'm just asking, I just wanted to know who, how do we appoint those spots? And I'm thinking.
My responsibility?
Oh, yes.
My responsibility is, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ryan.
I know, I don't remember, I know where he went. He said that we went to Blaine because it was the state or the county put on emergency management training, and they literally went through, okay, you have your council, you have your mayor, you have your fire chief, you have your EMS doctor. Who is responsible for what in different classes? I don't know if they still.
On the tabletop. And then that will be part of this, once you get your plan in place. Right now, Blaine and, and it went to a tabletop, Co-Grove and East Sub are going through with the county and tabletop. So it goes through and says, here's the scenario.
I understand that. This is even at the higher level, just to give an overview for, for someone who's not familiar with it, and I don't remember it exactly how, but I know it's, the administrator does this part. This is the peak person who's going to be talking to the press. This is the person who's making sure that all the equipment's available, or we need to go requisition something. And it's, that's kind of what the mayor's talking about. It's here's all, here's all the pieces that get put together.
So I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, when you do that is you have memorandums of understanding. Because we just don't have enough people and equipment should a plant leak through town. So you would have a memorandum of understanding with the churches housed in place to, with the big trucks in town to say, we need help. You know, and you're not out doing something else, then we use your trucks. So those are all things that have to be part of that emergency plan. And there are people have responsibility to set that up. And then once it's in place, then there's a tabletop where they actually go through and exercise and say, okay, here's the drill. All of you don't speak for the city, this person does. And only if you don't declare emergency within three days, you're not going to get your FEMA funds. And once it's in three days, then the council has to interact. You know, so there's, there's roles that go with that. And that's all defined in that plan. And certainly, the council can see the, the draft plan we had in place. I have not heard back from the county, other than they volunteered at no charge to help us with the, the updating.
So.
But I didn't see what changes it made. So we have a draft that exists.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
Go back to this direction here. So you're suggesting, suggesting that we need fire chief, data as the emergency, acting emergency director, emergency management, management director, excuse me. And that we leave the second space open with the understanding that once we have a fire chief, the fire chief will appoint somebody. Is that correct?
Or recommend somebody.
Recommend somebody. And then as Councilmember Flattible stated, that, and you have stated that that is Those appointments are a responsibility of the mayor. History has said we've done it in one day, the spook in January. Are you saying or are you asking that this piece be separated out? And a separate resolution, separate R C A? Or are you willing to continue with our history of having that be part of? The annual appointment?
We recognize the appointment I made in January.
So we would not have to take that out and do another step?
No, now.
Okay.
Should the the new chief come in and deploy them, we we can amend it like we're doing.
Right, yeah, okay, right.
But no, that would be, you know, the the appointment would be there and we would just make it as part of the annual appointments. Then again, the uh. I'm not gonna, I'm not lobbying for me to be this person, but I think when you have a public safety liaison. Um, it was to believe this as this is the responsibility of city administrator, yes, they, the fire chief. Uh, reports to the city administration, the um. Sheriff's liaison works with the city administrator. I think public safety liaison needs to be a council member because again, we're talking about council liaison. So this is the council member who interacts with those people, even though they report to the administrator. And their day to day activities are there. It's still the the point here was you have a public safety liaison, so the council has something because. The council has no other um connection with public safety except through the administrator. Who is again, a report to the council. So I just think that if you have liaison, it should be somebody on the council that's saying, yes, I can sit in. Uh, a person from the council can sit in appropriate and report back to the council. Uh, certain things related to public safety.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
This is basically a similar that will, some very similar to what we're doing with the fire protection council.
Yeah, that's correct, correct.
And 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 at that, and at the fire protection council, they are presenting a budget. Or for fire protection services and having the council represent someone there, we're literally talking about a bunch of things and discussing things. And why is now then having to pay this percent, this huge increase or decrease or whatever it is? Because that's a discussion that at the fire protection council, not only is the chief there, but also a representative. Uh, from the council or the mayor also there. Is that basically similar?
Yes.
Yeah.
And 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 public safety will, most cities is the largest part of the budget, certainly a growing part of ours. Councilmember Ryan.
So if public safety liaison, so there is a budgeting thing with that as well?
Yeah, we have a contract with the sheriff, we have, we have, we have uh. That's an outside entity, kind of trying to put sure. And we have um. A budget item because the fire department is a city activity that will come through the budgeting process.
The fire liaison is separate from the fire, right? That's not public safety one, right?
No.
Yeah.
That that's a, that's a particular um. Entity, the separate entity of our chief's no life beneficials.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Yes, I would ask, and again, what are, what are the duties, what are the responsibilities? What type of reporting back to the council? Is is that a liaison response for? And then second would be, how does the remainder of the council feel about leaving the desks? To anyone else interested in that position?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Ryan.
To cover under me, though, I would say there's definitely, there should definitely be a correlation between. The um public safety liaison working with the the sheriff's department. And public safety issues as well as with the uh fire protection council because they are one. Um, if anything. We could look into combining those into the same things and have the same two council members. Um, be have a friendly backing of this and certainly the uh. See the reason why the administrator couldn't tell those either. They could take in all that background, they were very informative when I was going as the backup. Or informative, but she. Very informative as far as what's the, you know, the the and working. With our groups in the different cities, so.
Is it, Councilman Flago?
I didn't hear in the last, but did you say, what did you say about the administrator, that the administrator should not?
Yeah, should go.
She should go, okay.
There's not a voting number. No, any anybody could go, if there's more than two of us, we'd have to let people know.
I didn't.
But only, only the appointed one can vote.
So I I was going just in case something came up. And so we could figure out what's going on and actually interact with different chiefs and different council members and mayors from the different cities about about the. Um, the at the time, the fighter, the fire services among in the county, so.
That was from fire chief.
That was just the the fire one, we didn't have, we didn't have anyone going, or at least it was, I was just going into the fire protection. We didn't really have a public safety liaison.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get, the difference between fire protection and the. And maybe it's because we don't have the duties that are responsible for those.
I think in law enforcement versus fire. It's an easy way to put it. And they never, never really had anybody going at the time or there wasn't, it wasn't lifted officially out as who was going.
Wasn't officially listed, so the emergency management where you end up, you know, typically you'll see a lot of the same fire chief and the. Uh, sheriff's deputy, they end up being at the same meetings for different functions. And so, uh, you know, I was, I was acting in public liaison with the the sheriff's department at the time. And I've been on the fire protection council for a number of years, so. It was almost, you know. Were formalized. So it was nothing discussed here. Well, what's the uh, what's the action here, reinstate public safety liaison? And reinstate it and and if the council approves, I'll stay on this this time.
And now I had a, and I would add to it from now to current fire backup to keep be the backup.
Yeah.
And and Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Um, to council member Brian, if they're not on the R C A, we're not touching. So anything.
No, there already is on right here.
Okay.
So the fire protection already has. Mayor Heon and council member Alba has.
Right, and we're not touching the fire protection policy, so that, okay, all right, I just want to clarify that if they're not on the R C A. Then we're not touching those conditions, so what is on your public safety liaison?
When we're leaving it in.
We're just.
Leaving it in.
Yep, that's fine.
Jeff is going to be the delegate.
We're just going to leave out it, so it's not that we have to take it out or put it in, it's just you have to have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're unprocessed.
Right.
Alright. Um. I have number two there. Um. And I think the the question I have is, in the past, typically representing the council, the mayor would. By our direction here, would would determine if um. Consultants attended meetings in conjunction with the administrator. We're flipping that, that the intention with to have the administrator deciding consultants come? And and what would be the um in consultation with the mayor? If there's a question, what would be a question of council member Ray?
So yes, we are flipping that, um, we not have a city administrator that works on a daily basis with our contractors. Uh, legal engineering plan. Um, if he believes that there's a need for them or thus that the administrator believes there is a need for. One of those three people to come to a meeting and address an issue. Then even the administrator would give them permission. If the administrator is unclear as to whether or not. A consultant should attend a meeting. Then he would consult with the mayor.
Right, um. The uh. Let's have assignments. Um. First off, on the first page of Legion. Request for council action is that the city's public newspaper, I thought was the paper of record, it's the official title.
And that's correct.
Um, and then, so the, I would, I would, am I asking for clarification on the. Additional signer of checks in C V's? So acting mayor, this person's asked an additional signer, and then there's additional signers of checks. Could you clarify what? What that means to you to the R C A? So we're on, we're on.
We're on.
We're we're.
So Mr. Mayor, that was not part of our R C A, we weren't touching that.
Okay, so.
I took that, let's see if I can finish, I took that from what was agreed upon in January. So it was the signer of checks, I can do it in your absence. The other person that can sign a check is city administrator Lainer in his absence. Or at the direction of deputy clerk Natalie John, who can sign a check. You have to have it either yourself or myself on.
Right.
Which is what we've been doing.
So, eh eh can we clarify the absence? As opposed, as opposed to convenience? So, so two things, you're you're acknowledging that either the mayor or in the absence, the acting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
That was not part of our R C R C A, I would like to say, but what is part of our R C A? If you would like to put together documentation and clarify that, then do that in the center. Okay, I'm just looking at addressing what is on the R C.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I do not believe there was a motion. I don't remember when you asked, making a motion.
There's that, so I feel this in this.
General, we have an ocean's first.
Just one we clear, alright.
Alright, let's start off.
So. Would you make that?
Councilman Flago.
Um, I made a motion that the council approves the updates to resolution two thousand two zero two four dash zero three as reflected. Um, whereas the now the city hall, it's the annual appointments to fill certain positions within the city government. And makes designations for the official. Positories of city funds and the city's public newspaper. At the first regular meeting of the year. And then.
Did we determine that was paper record?
Yes. And whereas the city council reserves the right to make changes as needed during the calendar year two thousand twenty four.
And so.
I will stop at that.
With the uh. We have a motion, Councilmember Flago, second by Councilmember Ray. Um, and that is to, with the. Clarifications that we made. Um, paper of record, versus public newspaper, Councilmember Ray.
I would, I would, yes, paper of record, we're removing the park liaison. We are under other agencies acting emergency management director, we are leaving the second position open. The public liaison, we are leaving it as is, that's off of it. Number two we've discussed, so number three would be the next one for this session.
Okay. Um, my due expense for tennis has a qualified name, you compensate according to city personnel policies, resolution. Number twenty twenty two dash fifty six, the council reimbursement policy. Uh, resolution number twenty twenty three fifty six. That title?
I, I.
Do we have a resolution twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three? Dash fifty six?
Mr. Mayor, I I clarify that I don't know if that's, if it isn't my error.
Okay, so basically, whichever resolution is, probably the twenty twenty two fifty six. Per meeting statement or contracted agreements. Um.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I do believe it is twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
After we arrive, yes.
Thank you for that, George.
That's the one that's on you there?
Yeah, it's the existing one.
So it's the existing one, so their headline is a.
Yeah.
And players in our.
Right? Any other discussion on that, any questions on that? Right, uh, changed. Five. Being the second Tuesday of the month. At six o'clock, unless otherwise noticed. And then number six, nothing is resolution allows elected official resident, let city of now then. Yes.
Oh, I'd like to go back to number five.
Okay.
Um, previously, we had our Thursday at the workshops. Um, I would like to just change that as um and just cross out until as needed. Throughout the year. Because we just, we schedule them for Mondays and we schedule them for Tuesdays and. Okay.
Right, and they also number five? And then number six, nothing is resolution allows elected official or resident, let city of now then direct. To direct a third party. You might bet you make that a third party or causes city of now then to incur costs.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
I struggled with this, but it's, we, nobody has the ability to fit the city. Or direct a third party, or cause the city of now then to incur costs, so I, the verbiage makes sense, I saw.
The the question I would have was that resolution of the uh. At our last council meeting, we said, people get an hour. So that would counter this because a resident's fit mid city of now then.
It was.
A third party to cause, incur the cost because we did.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Um, the residents that are spoken to in number six are those residents that are part of this. Resolution, so basically the the P and Z members. Um, if we were to go back and have residents on our upper along river watershed. Um. That they would be the ones that I'm not speaking, we're speaking to in this, not anything to do with what. Change those improving laws.
We probably have it because there's nothing distinguishes it. A resident.
Okay, so we can put a rest, okay, so how, we could change the verbiage to say an elected official. Or resident for um, or being a liaison for the city.
Appointed.
Appointed resident, yeah.
Okay, appointed them.
So then then we'll also have to go back, just be given two P and Z. So that they understand that they don't have the authority to do what's listed in the notes.
That would prevent them or any of us from like, oh, who being? Seeking legal advice.
Seeking legal advice from council. About that incentive rest of that.
Anything else on this? Alright, we have a motion, the second, and then you see they handle the little physical looks.
I'm just not understanding that, the, the, what's not understanding the, the wording change. In number six.
Uh, you know, with, with, one of the next ones coming up might be redundant. I don't know that we need it twice, but. Basically, they're saying nobody but staff can contact. Contracting points. And I can debate it here, debate it there, but. I do think there's times residents. Have needs, but. Do we need it here and in another document?
And then I'm trying to get at, the city of now then is causing the city, the city of now then. Causing the city of now then for cost because residents aren't getting stipends for. Uh, helping the city, and that's what I'm not understanding. How it's ordered there.
So, so Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So, uh, so, so residents that are, would be part of this revolution. Do not have the ability to go out and contact a third party. Which would then build the city for something. Okay? They cannot. Direct anything that, that the city's gonna incur. It's just more of a. A clarification that, that, that they don't have the right to. Have conversations with. Whomever that that's going to incur costs for.
Not making sense.
So, okay, so let's say as I am the liaison for the.
Can I ask what the wording was, or is this an?
It is not, um.
That's was my guess, I just wanted to make sure.
So, so as the farmers market liaison or the recycling liaison. I don't have the ability to go out and contact ABC company to say. I would like a bid. And if they tell me they're going to charge me for that bid, I can't do that. If they're gonna do a bid for free, that's fine. But if they're gonna build the city for something, I don't have the authority to do that. I need, I would need as those liaison positions. Go to staff and say. This is what's occurring. If I want to continue on with it, then I bring it to the council. As a resident, the resident was the recycling liaison. They don't have the ability to incur costs on behalf of, or have the city incur costs.
And, and this is where. I would struggle if, if you were going to ask. Or permission to extend the city money. I would take it to the council. You know, if you wanted to go out and get a quote from ABC company and they're, they're charging for the quotes, I think that's a council decision.
And, and then.
No, you're saying, of course, the administration.
So I would go to the administrator, we clean that up, and I'd go to the administrators, they have a conversation on what I'm trying to do. And then they get on the agenda and we have a discussion. But I don't have the ability as a liaison or any of the things that are listed here. To. Have the city incur a cost.
Yeah, but why can't the council do what you did here, just write up an RCA and say, I wanna. I want to engage the services of. Such and such an entity for this purpose and have the council say, that's a good idea, or.
And, and if the city chooses to, or the council chooses to, that is part of that.
Yeah, but why put the extra burden on staff?
Because I want to have a conversation with the city administrator, they tell him what, or tell them what I'm doing. It's, it's information. And this is, I'm submitting an RCA that says I need ABC company to come out and give me a bid on three different things with the recycle center. They won't do that bid for free. So I'm gonna put in an RCA to ask council to approve the costs of obtaining that bid. Which, because it's the recycling center who would come out and score. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Or it could be that's why that, the same thing, maybe. Maybe we're both looking at the same thing. Um, I'm trying to think of the situation like that, but maybe it's even repeat like you said. Um, if. If Natalie is the question that came up on something, well, probably will be the same thing that we, but I'm just saying, she's saying farmers market liaison. If Scott had a question about farmers market. Or we were getting bids on something, maybe they, if by having that communication. I'm just trying to say, think what you're saying, by having that communication, then you're not governing up, like. I can't call Ruby without getting council permission. Because that may.
Right, but, but I, I don't understand. But if it comes to council, yeah, certainly gonna know about it.
Okay. But, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Okay, if I could block, then the other option is me blindly submitting an RCA and not having any conversation with staff. I prefer you have a conversation with staff to say, this is what I'm going to be caught. I mean, it's not, not ask for permission to go on, something to go on agenda. I'm just informing on, of what I'm going to do. Or.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I just, it just, it strikes me as, it's giving permission. Because it seems like, okay, it's further, I prefer to detach from our contractors and our residents. And. And it just seems to be one more. Blockage there. You're trying to help residents to say. You have to go through. More red tape. I just, I just, I just.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
But if they take it to the council, council, that's a good idea, then the council would direct staff to work with. The contractors according.
And, and Mr. Mayor, that's fine. Once it comes to council, we can make that decision. I'm just trying to advise people that. Are part of this annual appointment resolution, that they cannot subject. The city. To a bill. I'm not saying it's happened, and I'm hoping it won't happen, but it just clarifies. That as a liaison, as a, um, member of the architecture review, as the capital improvement committee, I can't. Meet with somebody. Or any of these people that are on here can't meet with somebody. And then the city get a bill for that meeting.
So, so let me, let me ask just to clarify to you. Because I, I think it probably, what's needed in here is. Something to the effect of. People. Appointed to these positions in their roles can do that because. Because the way this reads, if I want to ask. My one hour free of a consultant. On my home.
It's got nothing to do with this.
I know, but that doesn't say that. So I'm saying, if we put the verbiage in it saying, in your role. As defined above. You can't incur costs as a resident. That's, that's what. Concerns me is we, we limit council members in a way we don't limit residents. And so we say, in, in your role. As appointed above.
I wouldn't.
You can't incur third party costs.
You can add it, this only specifically talks, uh, talks to. The annual appointments and the people listed here on the manual. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
So. If you look at people that are in P and Z. That's what we're talking about. If we're looking at watershed, okay, so, um, Dan and I are on watershed. Some of those are just residents. They're not council members. So we're talking about those people that are representative of the city. In a liaison role. Cannot incur costs of the city, like, if, if I was just a resident and was on watershed. And for some reason, we were reading something, which I can't think right now, but if I'm.
We're getting, we're getting into legal stuff next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, then I am, I'm a representative of the city and I am incurring costs. Because I'm going to that.
And, and I.
So that would, so as resident, if I'm a resident.
Clarify.
Okay.
As, as a representative in the above roles. You can't incur. Third party costs without council approval.
Right, so Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would suggest changing number six to nothing in this resolution allows an elected official for a resident appointed. Per this. Resolution. To commit to the, to commit the city of now then, direct a third party or cause the city to have now then to incur costs.
And could you put without council approval? Prior council approval. Yep. I think that's much clearer, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else on that? So with those clarifications and changes. We have a motion, we have a second, any other flag pages or changes at this point? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, now. Motion carries. Aye, okay, Mr. Sir. Now we're on third party consultants, contractor access and associated.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
So I move to, um. Yeah, I think, or actually. Um, this, this RCA basically.
Make your motion.
So I, um, move. To approve. Um. Third party consultant contractor access and associated building. Um. To. Provide direction to cities. The purpose of the RCA is the resolution is to provide direction to city staff, elected body, and that's often contractors. Parted by adopting a policy which proves guideline of permitting. Process for access to consultants, contractors and others and their invoicing requirements.
That, that.
Okay, and Lord, Councilmember Flahbo, second council member Rainville. And we'll open it up for discussion. Um, my first question is. We talked about this last month, but. So is this? Resolution? Um. A policy?
Yes.
Where is it kept? What is it not, what is its number? Right now, you know, we have to go through a resolution book to find it, and they're, they're not stored by. By policy. That's one thing we talked about last month, is if their policies, they shouldn't have a home and they should have a number so they can be referenced.
Yeah, we mentioned.
Okay, so.
In the meantime, we're gonna prove it with the understanding that we have to. Find that.
Um. Okay. So one of the action items would be, we have to find a home for it and, and. Identify with a number so we can go back to it. Then, um, on the RCA, the first. Item. Is, uh. The counter effect, we just went on item six on the last one. City council directs. Members of its body to receive documented council approval RCA and resolution prior. To working with any consultant contractor, et cetera. Up to and including requesting them to perform work on behalf of the city. Up to and including means you can't even talk to these people unless you have prior documented council approval. I just, you know, we're just putting a big wall between us and the people we hire. We can't even talk to them. Unless we have council approval. Um. Because it's, to the bar, bar is extended, including requesting them to perform work on behalf of the city. Um. So if you're, if you're asking a clarifying question, if you're. And, and again, to me. We've restricted city council, you can't ask a question according to this. On a personal basis. Of a, of a, say, a planner who, we said earlier, the city can ask an hour, you know. City or not city, you want to move here, you ask a question, you can get an hour free with the planner. But not if you're a councilman.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um. I, I understand your thought. This is. If, if you want to talk to a, a planner on something that you're doing in your home, at your home. You have that same hour available to you. As any other resident. This is. The elected body. Contacting our consultants. And then. Having those consultants build the city. For those conversations.
Okay. But, but again, I know your intention. But a lawyer would say that's not what this says. It says if you're a council member, you can't talk to a contractor.
Mr. Mayor. The last part says to work on behalf of the city. It doesn't say.
It says up to and including requesting them to perform work on behalf of the city. It says. To receive documented council approval prior to working with any consultant contractor, et cetera. Up to and including. Working for the city. That's asking a question of a contractor or, you know. Um. You know, and if, if somebody's out there laying the tumors and a council member walks up and says, what are you doing? You don't have to, how do you do that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Flahbo.
Could we amend this to say the city council directs members of its body to receive documented council approval? Prior. To working with any consultant whereas. A charge would be incurred.
Either.
Pardon?
Yeah, well, either. If you work with the planner, you'd be used to play power, you're gonna be charged. Could be charged.
Without, what I'm saying, without council approval, like I can't stop the Ruby, you know.
No, no, I have a personal case. Are we working on behalf of the city or trying to build a new shit on our house? We're not.
Well, what the planner, they would be billed charges to the city, but it's not on behalf of the city.
Dan, we just need to clarify.
I need, I pay for like.
For hour. Two later this thing, I mean, it feels like we're pretty, I mean. The intent of this is. If you're not working on something, you're not building a deck. Which is clearly not on behalf of the city. That's your whole, full project. It's a separate fuck of them. I'm gonna call up Scott because I'm working for the, I'm, I've got a question, I've got a question on culverts for the watershed. And I'm gonna call Scott, get him on here and see what this culprit is gonna do, and Scott's gonna, Scott, uh. And Shane is gonna turn the meter on, or. I've got a question on barn and, and I'm gonna call Ruby and see how he would handle this city. And we turn the meter on. Or whatever scenario. This is not. Jason's gonna build a deck and he wants to know how neat his footing should be. That feels like that is not on behalf of the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
And I would just. Would say, and would not have.
I'm not saying we have.
And I don't, and you are, and I just want, and I'm saying that that's preferred, but if there's something for personal reasons, that is not behind it, so.
Right.
So that we're clear on this, because I don't want people to think that it's been any of that.
I'm getting down with the watershed stream. So my opinion is the clarity is on behalf of the city versus. So that, that part for me makes that clarity. That's not clear for other people, and we're looking, getting Ruby in there, I won't take that.
So, and we, the, the vague part is that consultant contractor, et cetera. I don't know who et cetera is, and up to and including, we just get rid of et cetera. And up to and including and say requesting them to perform work on behalf of the city, that's pretty clear. Right?
And, and Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And that's part of having a discussion.
Yeah.
See, council member Flahbo, when I worked on this, the more you work on it. The more you're working, the muddier your head, sometimes it's, it's, sometimes it doesn't, so that's why I don't have any other people talk about it. So moving the, the, et cetera, up to and including, and including.
So then number two. Um, city council directs city administrator or their designated. Why would their designated being a performing consultant contractor, of, of. Consultants, contractors or others, and clearly vague others. Their responsibility for the city administrator of all conversations with the elected officials.
Mr. Mayor.
That's really broad.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So what this is, is that. The city administrator is to ask, and if, if city administrator tasks to the, to the deputy clerk. That's they're responsible to contact our consultants, contractors. Or others that there could. Then they're responsible to contact our consultants, contractors, or others, because there could be somebody, it could be. Somebody else that when they get a call from. An elected official, that they're supposed to ask, does that caller have approval to contact them? If they don't, then they need to tell the council, the elected official, I can't have conversation with you, you need to go back to the city administrator.
Okay, so, so again. The directs the city administrator or designated, which could be anybody. To inform consultants, contractors. So if Joe says you can't do that. On, you see the designated. But to, to, in other words, responsibility for the city administrator, all conversations with elected officials. And direct consultant contractor to ask if the mayor, council member has the approval of the council to contact them. How would they know? If they have the approval of the council to contact them? They go back to number one, if they say yes, I'm, I'm, I'm showing you a document, a documented RCA that says, the council says I can talk to you.
So.
So again, it just, it just seems kind of polluted because, because you've got city staff saying. Do you have permission, do, you as a contractor verify you have permission from, have you seen the RCA to do this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So city administrator or their designated. That will be up to Scott. The city administrator to determine who is to call are at this point three outside consultants to say. The new policy is that a council member has to have approval from the council to call. If you can, if you would then ask them, do you have that approval? And if I say, yes, I do, and I don't, then shame on me. But it just gives them the ability to know that this is an approved action taken by the council. And that the city administrator then is made aware of contacts, so that there's no doubling up of it.
So you, you put in your consultant and contractor, you're saying we have three consultants or contractors with.
Yeah, it's.
And, and again, contractor leaves it open, anybody works for the city, so you're saying your intention is the planner, the attorney, and the engineer.
Those are typically the three people that bill us when we contact them.
Mr. Mayor, so can we, can we identify that as, as the? City consultants, so we don't have to worry about. Somebody saying, well, I've got a contract with the city and you talk to me. So we have to, anybody who ever has a contract with the city would have to be under the same, don't talk to council members. Well, I don't. And, and again, I guess part of that is all conversations with elected officials, I like to go back to the verbiage of the first one. That. Would request them to perform work on behalf of the city, because again. I don't want to be a heritage council and talk to a consultant and. I not even get approval. Because all conversations is, is really broad. But, but if you're saying your intention is not, not. Incur more costs to the city or duplicate efforts, I understand that. And so to use the same verbiage in the first one that says. All conversations requesting them to perform, perform work on behalf of the city. And I'm okay with that. I don't want to, the point I. I'm in a planning zoning and I can't say hi to the city.
But, but there's not the intention of this.
I, I understand it, that's why, again, as you said, that's the clarification of all conversations and all conversations, is it? I'm sorry, I'm an auditor, but. But again, if we put the, the verbiage up front, requesting them to, to perform work on behalf of the city, then it clarifies. Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking about communication, I'm not asking about.
Non-personal, yeah, if you, but, but if you have a conversation, it was about the week, and then they are, they send us a bill. You know, so if it's a non-personal matter, that's fine.
And, and I'm hoping they, they aren't sending bills for that.
I would take that.
Mr. Mayor.
It's. Councilmember Rain.
Is, I don't know if you can address this, or administrator can address this, and I know he had some comments, but. As a, how big of an issue is, is, has this been? Is this an issue that we need to get into office?
There, there are occasions. Where working with. In particular, I'll go back to some of our internet stuff. And keeping things rolling along, there were some occasions where our liaison was out of town and we had some farmers market questions. And I got a call from another council member to help out. And it was at night, we're having a meeting, I called Bob. So I incurred costs related to farmers market. Without council approval. It was brought to my attention, you shouldn't be doing that. So I don't do it. But there have been occasions where. And I don't know, again, most of our liaisons are dealing with, not dealing with contractors or with consultants. If they're dealing with accounting, they're not charging for it, so you can call the county all you want and engage them with questions because they're not charging for it. It's just that we have a pass through system here. And, and there have been occasions where residents or business owners have had a question. And now that we have a, a policy in place that says you can ask that question up to a certain point and you get an estimate. That's clarified. But in helping some people, after you ask the question, they, they ran and ran a bill. They didn't say, we're going to go and charge you for this. Somebody on the, on the water, on the, conservation district. Directed you to, to do a map and they're getting charged with it. So I, I think it's clarification, I think it certainly has been some duplication where. A call has gone both from the administrator and from council member. And it's been brought to our attention and, and we're trying to alleviate that. So I, you know, I think it's, it's important, you know, to council to make sure we memorialize that. But I just want to make sure we don't go so far that nobody feels they can even talk to anybody anymore, because we do represent the residents here. And I'd rather err on the side of the residents. But let's make sure it's clear what we're doing here and that, so as I come in the council that we can't represent our residents anymore.
So are there scenarios similar to that where something may come up? That calls back to number one where it would need to be, or potentially needs to be resolved in. Can, could there be, I, I can see the use case where there could be something that literally needs to be taken care of now. I mean, as, we literally call him Scott at 10:30 at night and going, hey, I need to talk to Bob. If we needed to, I'm just throwing it on as that, could that be a possible scenario? And would that, would we?
Uh, well, we, probably the case in point would be when we wanted to get the newsletter out. And we found out we had to approve it as a council. And we were looking to run a check over that night, and then we found out we had to have it come. In that scenario, a call was made to Bob. And he said, no, here's the rule, you can't send that check out until the council approves it. And so. Could we have waited till the next day, just delayed on that, when we ended up having to lay on it, with trying to check out? Would there be a case where we might have to call some special council meetings to get approval, probably? Because the council has to approve it. Right? So if there's an emergency, like, you know. We have to call the council. But I would say that's going to be the exception rather than the rule. And so you don't make, oh, so for exceptions, you make up for the rules, and the rules are generally you can do this. By communicating through, through Scott. And with the consultants. And if you have something that you, you feel that the council needs to be aware of, bring it to the council and say, I'd like permission to. Be involved in this, or your rec staff, have the council try to have according.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Flaherty.
So, now that you've been consulting about when certain bills were passed through with consultants on residents, or residents didn't know. That they were going to be charged for that, so. I'd like to, so. Scott, for instance, is there anything that you can say that you've seen coming through that we have to be concerned with calling you at night? Or things like that, as. As Councilmember Rain said, or anything that you can think of that. On this one that you can clarify or go through, I'm just curious.
I, you know, calling me at night is an issue, I'm going to, I'll go back to what the mayor said about some. Ruby that night, or, or city attorney that night, when he failed, that's how it is, he called me to let me know about it, which. Was perfect, right? He let me know what the conversation was about, he said, you know, here's what we need to do, so on and so forth. I wasn't in the office, he and Jeffy Pepper in the office and handling the situation and brought up, but. More of the conversations are around duplicating, me, me contacting a engineer or city attorney or something like that. And then finding out somebody's already contacted them, so now we're, we're duplicating. Spend on that.
And, and we have, we've addressed that, that. There's a one-off and it's not going to happen again, so.
Not a lot.
Okay.
I should get attention to that, so.
Councilmember Rain.
So I was just going to say, we're going to have administrator on your edge.
Thank you, so there are not one-offs, there are situations that have come up that we are duplicating. And I'm trying to just determine what is the course that we all want to agree to going forward, I, I don't think. Multiple people contacting contractors and every time we engage the contractor, they, the clock is ticking. I wanted to come back to number two that was being discussed on here, I did talk with our city attorney about it, and it is not uncommon. Or there be a policy in place that if an elected official needs to engage a contractor, so on and so forth. That the city administrator would be involved and that there would be prior approval to be able to do that. To eliminate the duplicates of bills, duplicate of work on their, our songs.
And I, I don't think we've challenged that, what the challenge there was all conversations, and we, we said. That the, the consultants need to know that if they're engaging on city business, there's approval by the city council. So clarify that in two, it just went from all conversations, so we can't even be simple, because it's a conversation that wasn't pre-approved by the council. But if it's related to work performed on behalf of the city and it's going to cost the city money, then it's got to be pre-approved. And so I, I think that. That was the clarification we were putting in number two, that it's not leading the administrator out at all. And it certainly, I think, serves the purpose of what the council members were trying to do here is, is avoid duplication of effort. So I, I think that as long as there's council approval. And it's city, that work performed on behalf of the city, that clarification serves what I'm doing too, I believe.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I always asked me the question that was posed to me about, is this a one-off or do I see it in others? Other, uh.
The question was, how, how big a deal is this, and there have been some in the past, we admitted that. And it's not going forward, and that's the point of this RCA is to say, let's be clear so it doesn't happen going forward, and we just said. It's not going to happen because the council has to approve it. And so we won't be, if there were duplications in the past, this is what's going to prevent that from happening again, so.
Okay, we've got a number two.
Number three, the city council directs city administrator or their designated to advise all consultants, contractors. And again, can we keep it at consultants? Or others?
Mr. Mayor.
Um, yes.
I, I'd like to leave that in there, because if there is another, if, if there's a contractor that's going to bill us change orders on. Something that we're doing, because we've contacted, contracted, contacted them and there's change orders and we're going to bill them. I'd like, anybody that's doing work for the city needs to have. You know, work on the DC.
So anybody who's billing the city, they're in line, they're line item billing, shall include without any cumbersome. According to them. Without, without undue extra effort, the subject matter, subject location. Caller name if, if relevant, and name of the city staff or elected official, the consultant contractor or others spoke with. How, how do you picture that looking?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rain.
So if you look at the majority of the. Contractor buildings, consultant buildings, they are already providing. For the most part, that information. There are some items we get from the planner that doesn't have a location. Will maybe never have a caller name, because a caller name is a, somebody just calling and saying, is this commercial resident, what can I build there, what pant I do. But she, they wouldn't say who the city staff person they were, they spoke with, who the elected officials, or who the, the elected officials that they spoke with. The subject matter is, received a call from, from a resident pertaining to location of the shed on my property. That's good enough, it didn't go any farther than that, but it gives point if there is detail in what's being asked and being provided. Then, and if that is. If those calls are coming specifically through staff and elected officials that we know. Again, clear, just to be more transparent with the billing and. So that we can all, when we read those bills, we know who's contacting them, what, what's occurring. You know, Shane's are pretty much, he gives a little patient for everything. He may have to be more specific on his, and who directed them to look at something. But just so that when we review those bills, we know where that call came from, where that cost came.
So. You know, I'm, I'm working in a particular building. And. There's four and a half hours being built. There's a paragraph that says, email from so-and-so. Research some things, email from that person again for. An activity, attend a meeting with a few people in the city. Right, you know, and this was on, and there's a whole paragraph here. So you really don't know if that one item in that paragraph was. Half that time or just four hours and 30 minutes, if you wanted more specific than that, I'm just saying. In this four hours and 30 minutes on this day, I talked to this many people about a variety of things. How, how specific are you hoping?
I'm asking them, I, I don't want it to be cumbersome, cumbersome for them, so if a resident calls in and says. And I put this shed on my property. That's all I need to know, but if somebody's calling in and asking the detailed information, whether it's a resident, contractor, an elected official. It can't be self-out that that contact has been made. Because the consultants are going to have to look at how they're doing their work. Because I, I leave it up to Scott to work with this, those consultants to say this is the best, you know, to do it in this manner.
Councilmember Flaherty.
When I used to do consulting, one of the things that I had to do is, if I had a 15-minute meeting. I had to state when that meeting started and when that meeting ended. I had to say what took place, so I mean. I do understand when you've got something that says four hours and it's just listing things.
Well, it's four hours this day, three and a half, the next day it's, and then it's, you look at weight, there's, there's a lot, but it's just a group of, it's a paragraph that says, talked to this many people.
So whenever I had a meeting with something, someone, I had to state this time for this time, so I don't think that is a cumbersome thing to ask, I think that is, that is something that is. It, I, I, I don't think that's a problem, I think people should put down, at least be clear, clear as to. Who they've spoken with and what time, just as our attorney does that, or he puts down how many. Who they've spoken with and what time, just as our attorney does that, or he puts down how many, um. When he, or maybe it was Liz that did that, where I was looking at one bill a while ago where they. Did specifics on amounts of time that they. Were meeting with someone. I don't think that's too much to ask because that's something that's normal, but I think when. As council member Ray said, when someone just called in, that's. That's not a big deal, but when you're actually getting into something and going through things by people, um. And the incurring costs, then those things do need to be itemized, I would think.
I, I don't disagree. I'm just, I'm just wondering, looking at, at examples we have here. If they're sufficient or our council's asking for more clarification. Are you saying within four and a half hours? I'd really like to know, was this half the time or? All of these were twenty minute increments?
I'm not sure who you're talking about that, but I mean, I would say just off the bat, or maybe you're not, but I, I would want more information. From that thing, but I don't know what the.
So I would just.
Maybe within that four and a half hours, staff consultant. Says phone call, two minutes, phone call, five minutes, phone call, ten minutes. Yeah, research something, an hour and a half. But has a dollar, has a oil of four and a half.
Yes, that, that's, that's just what I'm asking. Is that what you're asking? So. And that makes sense because, because again, as you look at these invoices, you go. You know, that, that's four and a half hours, but I have no idea if that's one person. You know, two and a half hours and one person, fifteen people for the rest of the time.
That's coming from the consultant world and that's something that I did. So I would expect someone to. Do that. Can't, into council member Flattow, that is pretty much in this to stand. If I spend this much time on this, this much time like this.
You know, when I, when I've been in attorney's office for other services, I, phone rings, I see him hit them. Oh, and they're done with the phone call, they write down whatever client was called in is my, right, my timer. So.
So that's what we're asking for there, number three? Okay. Scott. Question, the bill I was looking at there, are you looking at the paragraph? And I just wanna make sure we're talking. That each paragraph is dated a separate day, so they're lumping everything together for that one day? Is that correct? So maybe we could take that day, right, and break it down like you're talking about that. I think the way that's been done is just. Capture it for the day, what did I do for that day? And this is what I'm doing, so.
Yeah, thank you. To council member's points that, that we could say, you know. This fifteen minutes was answering that email, this two and a half hours was doing research.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and then number four, city council, for the purpose of increasing transparency and avoiding duplication of resources. Recommends its members to inform city administrator of all endeavors that are involved in or behalf of current or future resident. Or business, even if there's no cost to the city. I'm guessing residents and business. So in increasing transparency, I would like to, to also say, it'd be nice if the council could get that. If there, if there's work with, with consultants. Increase transparency, say, I'd like to know what the consultants are doing. Because I look at the bills, there are certain things we've talked about that we didn't know were going on or said. We didn't necessarily direct to go on, and I'm saying they bill. Yeah, we said no, no direct PRC or collaborative plan, we work on ordinance this time. And the one thing here is emails and nuisance ordinance, researching IPMC, International Property Maintenance Code. On conference with Scott and whom, Councilman Bob. Two hundred, a hundred and five dollar item researching. I don't know if we really wanna go down the international property maintenance though or not. Councils never talk about. That. I, I don't wanna become a bureaucratic, bureaucratic city and, and, and have this. We, we don't know that that kind of research is being done.
So can I answer your question here? What, so I think that comes down to maybe clarifying better with staff and council as to what maybe. Because I can see also the other side of that where, um. And I, and I don't know, but the thing is I can see if I were in that position of staff. Going ahead and doing that, thinking that I can do this because.
I'm not, I'm talking about that. I'm, I'm talking about. Increasing transparency and avoiding duplication of resources recommends members inform city administrator of all endeavors involved. On behalf of a current or future resident or business, even if there's no cost to the city. Not talking about cost. I'm talking about activity. We want to be transparent. We have to inform of all endeavors. On somebody who may never even move here. And yet people that are here or people that were changing. How we process things within the city. Or developing the city. Or have, uh, ordinances in the city. We're not planning them out until they're drafted in front of us saying, go on that. So, so if, one of the things we used to say with our, our previous planner, if you're talking with potential businesses, we'd like to know about. Short of chasing a business out of town, it'd be nice if the council knew that. You know, seventy-two people looked at this house down here because the realtor said it was a commercial property.
Is that coming directly?
That's, that's all the information. If, if we are. Communicating all endeavors that involve. On behalf of a current, future resident or business, anybody who's calling about a future business potential here or, or future resident. If that's going through the planner or the engineer or the attorney, and that's going to, to the administrator, then we should have the same. Benefit of saying transparency says the council should know what you're doing. Because that's what CST bought, you know, bit us in the backside because we found a lot of promote growth. Because we, our planner didn't tell us a major development was going in and it was. Rather unpleasant experience on the phone.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray.
So this RCA deals with. The contractor's responsibility for their building, for bill, billing. Our responsibilities as an elected body. To provide information. If you want that same thing. From our contractors. Consultants, then I suggest. We develop an RCA that states that.
Well, but, but again, I'm, I'm clarifying the RCA here, increasing transparency. And I'm saying, as if all the information. If all the information that we get as a council about somebody who may wanna move here. Or may wanna start a business here goes to the administrator. And I'm just asking that as a continuation of that, that that administrator. Would then give that information back to the rest of the council. If I know something, the council should know it and, and I give it to the administrator or a consultant gives it to the administrator. And that should be forwarded to the council in an update of some sort. The mayor said he found out about a, a horse business wants to move in town. And he informed me of that, so we're gonna let the planner look into that or it may never come about, but. And we got three people thinking about a horse business in town. And in the same way, if the planner finds that these people are looking at, at something in town. That we get that same information because I'm assuming the planner's telling the administrator everything we're telling the administrator. Whatever we hear from a resident, potential resident or potential business. That, uh, even if there's no cost to the city, that that be communicated back to the council as part of this. And we're gonna communicate and let's, let's make sure what you tell. The administrator, we all know. What I tell the administrator, we all know. And what the planner tells the administrator or the engineer tells the administrator, we all know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray.
So to clarify what we are asking is for increasing transparency through communication with both staff. Administration and council. Onto each other.
Yes, because, because. Transparency, because to me, this is also transparency regarding city funds and future development. If we've got development going on. I think it's important for the council to know that. If there's going to be an activity that's gonna cost the city money. Going on, changing something significantly, ordinances, whatever else, I think the transparency of the residency, that's a good idea. And if the transparency says this activity. That the city's gonna spend money. Maybe increase the bureaucracy, residents may wanna know that too. But I'm just saying that if, if, if we're. Communicating, and again, all is still broad, but endeavors that are involved. Uh, on behalf of current, future residents or businesses. Even if there's no cost to the city, and I think any of our consultants that are doing that should also, and we should have that communicated back to us. So many very small things happening in the city.
Councilor Ray.
Well, and Cindy does do that through her monthly reports. Shane, I, I've never. Uh, unless, more, majority of his art is road problems, because we've assigned to him. Uh, the attorney is typically city function. So if there was anything. It would be on the, the planners. And, um, she does do her reports and if we need to increase the. Uh, frequency of those or just quick emails, um, that's fine. But again, the, the attorney really doesn't. The attorney only does what we, we, what they're directed to do. And, and pretty much Shane too, um, if council hasn't directed them on a road project. Then the city staff has directed them on a call that went out. Doesn't really come to council other than the site they have.
So the, the broad thing is to inform the city administrator of all endeavors. I just, if I had a casual, casual conversation with somebody and Bill's super pregnant, think they might wanna move here. I'm probably not gonna call the administrator and say.
Okay, we can take all out and then we can be, um. Use some common sense, but if it's something that, that if I, if, if somebody comes to me and says. I wanna see A, B, C, and D. I'm gonna let the administrator go, no, because. They already are aware of it and then are not caught blind when a resident calls it.
And it is, it does, they recommend. It does not.
Yeah, you aren't required to, I'm just trying to be proactive and. We're having conversations with businesses, residents, current or future. Um, that there is a potential of something coming to the city. And then in turn, the city, the, the city council, that we give a heads up to the city administration.
And then, and then do we? So you're gonna hurt, whatever, I hurt it, whatever, and I communicate it. And is there a recommendation and communicate that back to the council? So I really have the same information?
So if that is council's decision, then that would be part of this RCA.
Okay, and, and then, like you say, it's probably most likely the planner, but it could be another consultant who has. An engineering issue or whatever. So if, if the consultant has information. They communicate to the administrator that that can be communicated back to the council as part of this as well.
I'll just go to do a stand up, you know, forward the email.
Okay, so can we, uh. Do the authors of this, Councilman Flattow and Ray, can we add the, delete the all? And then, uh, and have as part of this included consultant's information that comes to the administrators. And the information from council and the consultants is then communicated in a timely fashion back to the council. So all people, all council have the same information.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do you have some sort of, very, very long, you're talking about, I don't think you wanna see every email I have with the city. Planner. So is it about businesses coming to town, about things that could generate you? Do you wanna get an email every time we got a, a question about eighty-seven hundred Viking, that kinda stuff? I mean, what, what are we?
Well, so it says, endeavor is involved on behalf of current or future residents and businesses, and if there's no cost to the city. That's where that's at.
So that was written for us contacting you down here. We have to use some common sense. No, I don't wanna see, it's my, my opinion, I don't wanna see every email, email, but if at the end of the week. There's been numerous things about one location and it could be something that comes. Eventually to us or our planner has to spend more time on, a quick email is fine. Or if there's somebody that is thinking of opening a coffee shop in town or things like that, you're getting things, those are, and it's just.
Those make total sense to me.
And again, it says recommends. We're not. In this RCA. As a council member, I am not seeing it saying, Scott, you have to. I'm seeing recommends. So it's basically we're communicating. Having a conversation back.
And I also try to go together weekly, update pretty often, the things that actually are going on.
And thank you for that.
Okay.
All right, anything else on? That one? So, uh, we have a, a motion and a second. And they, uh, have you include the amendments as discussed?
Yes.
So the motion and the second include the amendments as we just went through? Any other questions or changes? Seeing here, not all those in there, but we signify by saying hi. Post, motion carries.
We have received a resolution, twenty twenty-two dash fifty-six, current meeting date policy. The purpose of this resolution is just to try to get, um. Some clarification, cleaning up some of the verbiage that was there. Um, such as the name of an organization, um, so that that's consistent throughout it. Um, the second page, um, in the red is, are, are changes that are. Um, being suggested by the councilwoman Flattow and I. And then the resolution is an updated resolution if all of the changes or additions that are made. But part of the thing we need to talk about is, um. On the first pages, um. So when, with our internal organizations that aren't called out in this. Resolution, um. Should the attending be approved by the full council price for attending? Second is. Who, and this was more of a cleanup thing, who of any of our current elected body has been approved by council via NRCR resolution? To be the representatives of these, of these different organizations. Um, if it's not spelled out in a policy, there are mayoral policies that. It's specifying what their, the mayor's duties are, um. For the league that talks about the mayor's duties. Should we have a, should we direct council to develop this? And it goes back to number two, as to who was on what, so that everybody knows. Who's, who's representing the city at whatever organization. Um. And then internal meetings, uh, city meetings or event. Um, should they be included in the stipend policy? Um, the stipend policy never, never addressed internal meetings or events. Um, so questions on like the city leadership meeting, the city administrator's leadership meeting, will they cycle and center events? Um. We, the league of Minnesota cities and metro cities offer online sessions. Should they be included? Um, is there a minimum for attending an online session that's an hour? Is that okay for a forty dollar stipend or is it not? Um, and then. One of the things that came in today, um, and then I think the other one was last week, was invitations to attend something. There was the invitation to attend our, to look at their programs. Um, we get the invitation from the county. For meeting, brief for the new event, the candidates, the new county administrator. Would both be included. And I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just thinking, questions.
So along those lines, I think, um, it's important to give them defined and get council agreement on it. I also think that, we'll go through some of the specifics on it, but I think that. I also think that, we'll go through some of the specifics on it, but I think that the questions should be resolved by council. So to your point, was there a request, you know, like the Dan Hip or the LMC conference? They put in a request, and that included my, or Ruben or whatever, you know, whatever. So that's very specific. Some of these others, we probably had creeped on. And I think that, going back to the council's fiduciary responsibility, the council should decide that. So when, you know, for many, many years, we've been doing things without pay. And then this policy came up, and I was like, okay, we do an extra stuff, there should be a stipend on it. And so then a question came up like on the recycling. We'd never taken, taken to that before. But then it was recommended that, well, you're giving your side of it, well, we should, now we have stipend policy, there should, we should do that. And I think I'm safe, was not going to the council and saying, is that a qualifying event? So leadership meetings, is that a qualifying event, or recycling center events? Online sessions, is it a training session? I think there's a distinction, like, like right now. Again, because I was part of the fire protection council, and I got appointed to the finance committee. I never, you know, at the time, we didn't think about coming back and saying, you're appointed to the finance committee, so that's going to be extra meeting. And I didn't get council approval saying, are you okay with being on the finance? I think there's benefit, I could justify that, but it would make sense to come back and say, is the council okay with being on the finance meeting? If so, is that a stipend-worthy event? Because we're all over the county, we use Zoom meeting. And so if the Zoom meeting is that, and I think that should be a discussion amongst us. And say, yeah, we agree, or no. And because those of us that have been on here a long time, we know what it's like for meetings, and I've never get company since the war. As opposed to the small cities lunch and learn. And that's what the council can say, yeah, are we going to do that? Or should we do a stipend for that or not? If you want to do lunch and learn, or do it when they're doing it live, or do it afterwards? But as a council, we should say, the lunch and learn is coming up, what's the status? This meeting is coming up, what's the status?
And Mr. Mayor.
And then, and then I would think when we turn in that sheet, that the council signs off.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
And then that's the exact purpose of it, is to get clarification of what is and what isn't eligible for the stipend. So that one, or we have a rule, a resolution that tells us what is and what isn't available. And so that would be an action I didn't also, because it's for a, it's a policy. We need to know where that is. He's saying.
Councilmember Raino.
But we also, as an action, I need to know where this policy fits where within the council policies. And there are council policies on record, we just have to slide them in where we want them. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
Um, a very kind comment. That's been, with being a new council member, it's, it's hard to determine what is and what, not that I wouldn't, I'm putting in a lot of hours that I have not been compensated for, and I'm okay with that, I'm a hope servant. But there's certain things that require much more. So like when you're talking about those lunch and learn, or whatever, that might be something that, it's just learning. But if I had, if, if we're doing something that's going to benefit the city by grant funding, and it's more in-depth, but it's also going to be something to really help the city write, writing the grant, and things like that, and, and none of us know it. That's something that I would see as compensation, but those are the things that we just want. I, I as a council member, want to see those things and know those things, and it helps me to understand what other council members are doing. And therefore, going ahead to see what we're doing, some torment, and going ahead as to learning myself what should or should not. And having that discussion would be good.
Yeah, and, and speculating, that's the point of this, is to say, let's identify that as a council and say, because I think, you know, we kind of advocated that, saying, well, this makes sense to those of us submitting it, or to the administrators, and getting your donating your time. That makes sense. But then to go back and say, what's the literal policy that we put in place, you know? Some things have mileage for them, some of them don't, don't clarify, you know? If you're asking for this and you're traveling, you know, again, if someone's go back to when there was a policy before, or a practice before, if you left the city, there was mileage. If you save the city, there wasn't mileage. So if you drive up to Bar None, you may be driving just as far as you're going down Ramsey, but you're staying in town. Or if you're so far away, the mileage kicks in. But that, if that's the case, it has to be part of the policy. When, when is there mileage, when isn't there? Well, if there's a request or something, and you request mileage, and the council says yes, then there's mileage. You know, but I think that the whole point of this is clarifying that. What are the qualifying events? And how does the council determine that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino. I'm thinking, just talking, take Jason out a little more, makes up a rubber, which is organization.
Organization.
And if that's the case, where we need to be more specific, do we table this, so it can continue to work on, so we can at least start on a list? Or are we going to take the time tonight to start on a list of, of meetings, knowing that the timing?
Well, with two hours and twenty minutes, and we haven't gotten to the basketball.
I would recommend tabling this, so we can actually come up with a list of topics. And in the meantime, if, if council members Flavio and Raino want to come up with a list, they can send it to Scott.
I know, Flavio. So have a deck of two hours.
My apologies. And then if Scott had that list, he could send it out. In the meantime, we could say, I would, we might be able to do some consolidating via email to speed up that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
As one of the sponsors of this, I would, I'd table it. What I would like to ask is, if you have specific things, that you think should or should not be included, to send them to the administrator, and he can send them out to council members Flavio and I, and we can continue to refine this.
All right, so we, we will.
Table just done?
Table it.
Table it to the dividing.
Get that, get your notes to administrator later, he will pass them on to, I won't say it because I'm a trip up.
The subsequently mortened is being rescinded, and then a new motion is being made to.
You don't need.
That's right.
So, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Part of the resolution, what about the forty-dollar stipend, is taxable? Yeah, that was not my understanding. So after seeing research, it is taxable. So are we going to give the stipends sheets as part of the plans? Or part of, it just goes in that this was part of your payroll? It, I mean, I just want you to think about that, and then no, going forward, anything upon it will have tax.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
That is addressed in it.
It says taxable way towards the bottom.
On the second page of the. Meeting enumeration is taxable, okay. So, I'm hope somewhere in here. Is that, okay, so the next one down, three, the completed request for payment logs are to be provided to the city council. So we'll just get copy of, not a dollar amount, but a copy of the law sheet in, in our packet, which she will then approve.
Yeah, because I think the council should be on approving.
And it will have dollar amounts on it.
You'll figure it out.
Well.
You know, that one, I mean.
The dollar amounts won't matter, you can do that as long as you're not showing.
Showing the difference. Yeah. So it's four meetings and forty dollars.
So that's tabled.
Yeah, okay, so July meeting. Yes, and what I would ask is that, so the July meeting is July ninth. If you could have them to stop by the twenty-sixth of June, it would be greatly appreciated, because as of July one, they just started working on the floor, reimbursed on the county reports. So I'm, I'm opposed.
And I also would like to get an estimated number of what those stipends should total up to for the budget as we start a budget tax today. And I need to be able to make sure that there's enough money in there.
And that's part of this also, we never address that piece of that grant meeting, what we need to have some place.
Do we have to have a motion to, they don't?
We did.
I guess we did it then.
It's my right.
So that is second aid.
Then that, tables don't have.
Oh, I didn't know that.
All right. One more thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'd like to make a motion to replace and resurface the basketball court at Memorial Park, including the extension of the asphalt, asphalt to include room for two pickleball courts, further quote, and up to what? It's currently at nineteen-nine forty, it's the best assault court you could get there. Do you need it? Up to and including?
Play that one, or you just throw it up and twenty thousand? Here it goes.
I'll just. Back them for discussion.
And resolution states not to exceed twenty-one thousand.
Okay.
As the resolution says, not to exceed twenty-one thousand. All right, so we have a motion for Councilman Brian, and we saw them for Councilmember Aldis. And we had a question, Councilman Flavio.
Yes, I'm trying to find my sheet that I handed you all, but I was.
This one?
The whole research sheet. Oh, did I, did I not see it? Okay.
This one?
Yes, that one, no, yeah, that one. Okay, no, I got it right here, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. So, yeah, makes it up with some papers. So I did, I talked to a bunch of the cities, oh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I spoke with a bunch of the cities. And, and you see, you read of these, everybody had different things going. And what I did like was that we, we wouldn't incur as much cost as the other cities had done, even if we did it. But you said up to twenty thousand, is that what it said? Twenty-one? Okay, and this was, the one from Hopeful was the most recent, that I just spoke about. And they, they, they did this last year, but they're finding that the costs are about the same for this year. So I just wanted to make sure to state that to all of the seats. They're redoing all brand new stuff, so hopefully it will be less than.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino. Clarity.
I do want clarity, basically, I'm just trying to.
The twenty-one thousand. No, there's not another resolution for nets, striping, court, et cetera, this is just getting the base down. So it'll be another twenty thousand of being added to the process. I mean, they're going to put a finer circus on there than the blacktop, they're going to put nets and tape to be. Right, right. This is just to replace it, just to give it, what's there, give foundation way. Put the basketball court back, and it just happens to be big enough, if we put two pickleball courts, and we bring our own nets and tape. So we want to go beyond that and get our own courts, we're going to have to do smaller.
So does it, it just seems like that, then if that's what we're doing, that we're actually spending more money than what it would have cost for them, for to do like what they do.
No, it says, it doesn't include the cost of the asphalt. If you include the cost of the asphalt.
Um, this one did.
Not including cost of the asphalt, because it would come in fifty-eight, twenty-five thousand. Let's see, I'll go on these on. Spoke with Man, we're going to put the works, add a minimum net, put the cost for asphalt, there should come in at fifty-eight, twenty-five thousand.
Except that they, when they, when we looked at this, it said. All right, I mean, there we go. I wanted to make sure that this didn't change, because they were. This was all from funny about them.
Yeah, and if you look at the paving there, it says forty-one, forty-eight, my eyes are kind of bad, this is, I'm going to say forty-one, forty-eight.
Sixty-one, sixty-eight.
Sixty-one, sixty-eight.
Yes, that was for the paving, so that was with the asphalt.
In our addition for the ten foot, it's like five grand, so I can look at that. Simple. The basketball court, it's all the same. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I, I'm going to go, I'm going to negative on this. I don't believe that the council has had a full conversation as to whether we're going to go with pickleball, what do we want it to look like, where do we want it to be, how are we going to coordinate what's being done there? So I'm all favor of replacing the blacktop that's there, that we took up. But I am not in favor of spending an additional eighty-six hundred dollars to increase the size of something, forty-nine hundred dollars, to increase the size of something that we don't know we knew that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian. As I, I told digital proponents, they're just looking, also just looking for a flat place to play pickleball with their own equipment, instead of having to do it in their driveway. So this allows some flexibility to give our residents that, that option. Can you come up here and play pickleball, or use a full court of basketball?
It's nice.
Councilmember Raino.
With doing something like this, with, with, do, I'm just trying to see with basket, is this the recreational basket that we're looking at for blacktoping it, for the park and rack? So is ma, is maintenance included in that? Is maintenance of park included in that same basket?
No.
No.
That's a capital.
Okay, I just wanted to clear my head.
So, so you're putting something in there that a certain dollar amount, that's going to last for a certain number of years, it's capital. But ongoing maintenance, you know, maintenance or regular maintenance is not.
Like if we had to fix things on the equipment that is over there, like the children's equipment that they play on? Is that a separate basket?
If, if you're replacing playground, that's capital. If you're painting the, the, you know, old equipment to post, that will be maintenance. If you're remodeling the pavilion, and that's a permanent remodel that you're doing, that's capital. If you're, if you're.
I'm more looking at the difference between, if, if something on the playground equipment needs to be fixed in the way that is not just maintenance, but actually has to be redone because of something, and is that in the same basket that creating a basketball court, or paving a basketball?
You'd have to know the specifics. If you're replacing the swing, and the swing's a hundred dollars, that's just maintenance. But if it's, if the thing got cut or pushed over, or whatever, that we're in the, we replace the entire set, then that would be capital.
Then it'd be capital, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So just one of the little set, you guys probably know the answer to this, but I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. We have set aside money for this project. If you remember hearing our budget inception last year, we did set aside money for park. We set aside money for the memorial here, and we set aside money, twenty thousand dollars toward the pickleball court slash basketball court, whatever we wanted to do. So that is specified and pulled out. If you remember, we pulled a hundred thousand dollars total out, and out of the capital, we'll be able to do those three projects. So just be aware that that dollar amount is slotted for that, it was up to twenty thousand dollars. is slotted for that. It was up to twenty thousand dollars in the sum of capital for us. Probably already knew that, but, uh, I don't know, me again today, I just wanted to make sure we're all the same, because we did specifically call that out of the money used for this project.
All right. Any other discussion? So you hear that? All those of you here, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Close?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Mayor? Council member. If there's nothing else, we'll make a motion for adjournment. We are adjourned.